I'd like to welcome everyone to our December meeting. Barb, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Beveridge.
Here.
Mr. Boyd.
Here.
Mr. Connell.
Here.
Mrs. Felter. Mr. Kuhn. Mrs. Steele.
Here.
Mr. Wickliffe.
All right, we have a quorum. We have a full house tonight. Awesome. I'd like to welcome Troop 315 from Trisom Trail to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand, please.
Color guard attention. Color guard advance. Color guard close the colors. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard just missed.
Mrs. Johnson?
Okay, thank you for attending tonight's Olethan Public Schools Board of Education meeting. Before we begin, we feel it is important that we review the importance of conducting a productive and orderly meeting. This meeting is designated for the board to work with the superintendent and the staff to conduct work as outlined in the agenda. Please understand that the patrons attending the meeting do so solely in an observatory role. Out of respect for everyone in attendance, we request that audience members not speak, yell, or give applause during the meeting. This ensures the board, staff, and other attendees are able to listen and understand the business conducted. Anyone disrupting the meeting in any capacity will be asked to leave and may lose the opportunity to attend future meetings. Thank you again for attending, and we will now proceed with the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Moving to Agenda Item 2.01, I seek a motion to adopt the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
A motion by Mr. Beveridge.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Steele.
Mrs. Steele.
Yes.
Mr. Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge.
Yes.
Mr. Connell.
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0. All right, recognition and awards.
Good evening, everybody. We have a packed house tonight, so as we move into awards and recognitions, I just want to take the opportunity to recognize our distinguished guests who are here with us. So first, I am excited to welcome the Olethan Northwest High School Girls Golf Team to the front, who won the 6A State Championship. And that team, yeah, let's hear it. So we have seniors Kayla Efferd and Kate Klein, juniors Julia Beveridge, Mackenzie Kelso, and Addie Raymakers, and sophomores Avery Hirschman and Claire Sullivan, along with head coach Michael Grove, assistant coach Alan Wagner, principal Chris Sook, and our district AD Matt Johnson. So this team won against Shawnee Mission East High School by 19 strokes. Olethan Northwest also had four individual medalists who placed within the top 20, so a special congratulations to sophomore Avery Hirschman, sophomore Claire Sullivan, junior Mackenzie Kelso, and junior Julia Beveridge. Congratulations, you guys. And as Aaron gets everybody situated, if we have any family members in the audience tonight who want to come take photos as well, please feel free to come to the center and...
I'm so sorry.
Tell people behind the shore, please.
Yeah. Come on up.
Except for Brett has to be in the back.
Smile right here. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Say "Purdy".
That's a wonderful job, you guys. We also had an incredible showing at the Gymnastics State Championship. So at this time, I'd like to welcome the Olethan North High School Gymnastics Team up to the front with Coach Amanda Harrington and their administrator, as well as Olethan Northwest sophomore Emmy Keller and Olethan West senior Alexis Purdy with their administrators, and then District AD Matt Johnson, once again. So our Olethan North Gymnastics Team took first place at the state championship for the second year in a row with a cumulative score of 106.9. And Miss Emmy, she earned the gold medal in vault and floor, and that helped her land the all-around individual state title. Alexis earned runner-up and also placed first in the beam event, which helped Olethan West earn second place as a team for the second year in a row. All of our high schools had such success at state due to the incredible talent of our students, of course, and the coaching of Amanda Harrington, who oversees all of our teams. Congratulations, everybody. Parents.
Make sure y'all stick to landing now.
I know. Thank you all. Next, we'd like to welcome the Olethan Public Schools Foundation to the front, including board members Aladdin Ashkar, Kathy McDonald, Jerry Barrios, Jim Martin, Leanne Rogers, Jim Bradford, and staff members Cindy Von Felk, Katie Bowden, Maureen Hurd, and Jody Farr, and Heather Schoonover, I don't know if you want to join them up front, too. The mission of the Olethan Public Schools Foundation is to connect financial and volunteer resources to enhance excellence in the Olethan Public Schools. The foundation works hand-in-hand with district staff and has a board of directors that includes 24 community members who volunteer their time, talents, and resources to serve Olethan education. More than $5 million were invested in district programs over the last five years. They love supporting teachers, students, and public education in several ways. The foundation provides programs that help meet our students' basic needs, and they are the go-to partner for district staff who see the unique challenges our families are facing. They are a big supporter of our 21st Century programs and career and technical education programs, raising more than $450,000 for those programs. The foundation is committed to supporting student mental health and wellness by providing resources to allow timely access to mental health care for underinsured students year round. And finally, they directly support our teachers through a series of robust classroom grant programs that finance projects that wouldn't be possible without their support. It is our honor to express sincere appreciation for their consistent financial and volunteer dedication to the Olethan Public Schools. Thank you for all that you do. And last, but certainly not least, we'd like to invite our MathWings overall winners from the fall competition to be recognized. At the October competition, Regency Place Elementary placed first in both the 4th and 5th grade categories. Please join me in welcoming Regency Place Elementary School 4th graders Vihan Tripathi, Kaylea Mack, Oliver Bennett, and 5th graders Zian C., Jonathan Gamper, and Sophia Vergilio, as well as their principal Greg Oborni and district math coordinator Spencer Brown. MathWings is a district-wide elementary school competitive club. The meetings consist of intense mental math skills, problem-solving competitions, vocabulary review, and various math scrimmages. We are super proud of these outstanding students, so please join me in giving them a round of applause. Awesome job. Well, guys, we had a full slate, but that concludes our recognitions for the evening.
I was trying to find one, and it was like eight different... I was like, what's hypnosis? And I was like, wait a minute. And at that age, they probably know.
All right, moving on to 4.01, our school spotlight. I'd like to welcome Principal Sala. The floor is yours.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, board, for having me here, and it's truly an honor to speak on behalf of Chisholm Trail. I do want to recognize Assistant Principals of Chisholm Trail Dr. Erin Richardson and Mrs. Krista Dinger, who are here tonight as well. I want to go, I'm excited to go through this. I want to share a little bit of context of kind of where I'm coming from. I'm a lifelong Olethanian. I grew up in Olethan. I'm an Indian Trail student, Olethan South graduate. I got my first job out of college when Ms. Carol LeBarre hired me at Chisholm Trail to teach 9th grade world history, and so I taught there for several years and moved on into Olethan South when the freshmen moved up to the high school. And then a year later, I was in administration up at Prairie Trail. It was 2020, a year of a little bit of significance, but 2020, and I was brought over to Chisholm Trail and to kind of come back full circle. So to be here tonight as principal of a place where I started, a place I call home, Olethan, my life, my whole life here, it's truly, it's exciting, but really an honor to be here, speaking on behalf of the community that's meant so much to me as a kid, now as a principal, and also as a parent of Chisholm Trail, because my oldest is at Chisholm, and I've got two more coming up. So I'm really excited to share a little bit about us. I was told, you know, they had, this is a good time to brag on your school, and so that's what I'm going to do. And I've got, there's a lot of different areas. I wasn't really sure where to kind of key in on, and so this first slide is probably, it's the slide with the most words on it, and the rest are pictures. I'm going to just ask tonight, just kind of have some quick eyes, because I'm going to kind of zoom through some different features of Chisholm Trail and kind of anchor in at the end, but we could certainly focus and talk about data, and you know, we're a school, and there's a lot to celebrate with that. I've got some stats up there. You know, one thing I will highlight, I've got one of our intervention coaches out there from Chisholm Trail, two former Chisholm Trail teachers who are now coaches. But one of the most exciting things as far as student performance this year is some of the, some of the students that we've been able to identify gaps from prior knowledge and to fill with the help of our coaches, our intervention teams, and that's really been a really exciting feature for us this year, really just making some gains in areas I don't know that we ever have before with all the supports that we have. I highlighted social, emotional up there, because that's kind of where my presentation is going to lead. I think it's become probably a little cliche in education, relationships, you know, first, and it'll lead to everything else, but it's so true. And that's really where I think Chisholm Trail is going to shine, so I'm going to, I'm going to go really quick through these next slides. So Chisholm Trail, staff camaraderie, our staff love to be around each other, they love to celebrate with each other. Just the week before Thanksgiving, those two bottom-right pictures, we had an educator of excellence out of our school nurse, and then a grant was awarded from the Public School Foundation for a century room, but our staff love to celebrate and be a part of each other's lives. That picture of cooking up there is Ms. Robinson, and she is our language arts teacher, but she was a guest chef, taking her planned time to go down and teach or cook one of her best recipes, and that's a common practice in our school. I'm excited to say tomorrow, I'm baking my mom's banana bread for second hour of facts, and we've got a whole lineup of different teachers and staff coming in to teach, and we'd love to do that, be a part of it for our kids. Our instruction, I could have spent this entire presentation talking about CST instruction and some of the amazing things that are going on. You'll notice that all these pictures are kind of Twitter polls. You know, that's kind of how we tell our story. I tell parents all the time, you follow us on Twitter, that's where a lot of the fun things and the things that are going on in our building, if you want to see what's going on from day to day, you'll see that up here, and you can just take a glance at that and see, a lot of engaging instruction, we really promote that and encourage that. Just like all of our schools, our athletics and activities, and every year we have successful seasons. And that doesn't mean that every year we're raising banners or that we're finishing undefeated, but our successful seasons are our coaches impressing upon our students the value of sportsmanship, working hard, being teammates, and we have successful seasons. There in the bottom center, we just concluded Aladdin Junior and seeing all of our activities. And on the bottom right there, that's our band getting ready for Old Settlers. What you can't really see is we had our whole school on the outside out there watching them, and so we celebrate and take pride in all the things that we do at Chisholm Trail. Our students are awesome leaders, and they're awesome builders of leaders. In the upper left are 8th graders, there are some of our 8th grade web leaders who helped mentor our 6th graders. On the bottom left and the upper right, that's our dance team at Sunnyside Elementary, teaching the 4th grade class and working with them, and then in the upper right with some little dancers and leading them along the way. So leadership, we do all we can to promote that with our students. CST gratitude, our wall of honor, we just celebrated Veterans Day, and that upper-left picture was just, that was before school, and just an awesome scene to see students gathered around the wall, finding names of veterans that they know or friends and connections, and just pointing and finding it, so trying to, you know, impress upon our students the importance of giving back and especially giving back to your country. Our generosity, I think over the last couple of years, we've raised almost 100 crockpots for the Public School Foundation to then give to the community. Pennies for shoes, we raised over $3,800 last year for the pennies campaign, and kicked that off today, actually, and we get really excited about that. We have our annual service project and really do a lot to try to reinforce the importance of giving back when you can, whether it's financial by raising money or by service by, you know, going all over our community, just like we do every spring. Just like every school, we have our traditions. I think we have some traditions that are special and unique to Chisholm Trail. We take over a section of Heritage Park every year. Last year, we were able, for the first time, to do that again, and just how awesome it is to have a shelter and all of our families come out and our band performs, and it's just a great night. I would invite anybody, if you're a fisher, if you want to come over and fish with us every fall and spring, upper-left picture there is Coach Kenzer. He wrote a grant to Bass Pro, secured some fishing poles. We have a very generous community member across the street who has a private pond said, hey, we would love to have you and your students over, and so we fish now. And so we're on our second year in a row of fishing and providing a unique experience for a lot, maybe even most of our students, a first-time opportunity to fish and kind of learn about that. And what you can kind of see in that big picture there is the, we have parents that just donate their time, and they come out and they help bait hooks and help our students, and so it's a really good community pull-in as well. Even people that are walking by the sidewalk, they just see what we're doing, they think it's so neat, just want to check it out. Every day at lunch, if you stop by our lunch, you can drop in and play some chess against some of our kiddos, we have some brain breaks at lunch. My caution is just be careful on who you play. I've gotten beaten very easily by some of our chess club kids, and just the other day, they were surrounding me and talking to their friend, and oh, I know what you're doing. I can see, I can see where this is going on, and I'm looking like, I need some help here, but... And then I mentioned the community, and that's kind of where I'm going to go with this. You know, we have some amazing community partners, you know, adopt a school partners, but then, you know, even our, you know, district office, I got some pictures there of some visitors across the street, maybe you've been to Carmen's, but that's Luis, he's very involved in our community. Mark from Journey Bible Church has done so much, and so we do a lot to try to bring in our, our community. And so that's kind of where I kind of want to anchor into the next couple of slides are, I'm going to say unique to Chisholm Trail, that we started this year our PBIS program. And I say it's unique, I think we're one of the early adopters on, as far as middle schools go, but it is a program that every school's going to be developing, and I'm super excited about it, and I'm really excited to talk about it, and it's a big thanks, honestly, to board to support this way back when it was adopted. A quick history, about a year ago this time, I reached out to Dr. Fluke, who's our PBIS district coordinator, and met with him, and we go through a series of, are you, are we ready for this? It's a time commitment, we need to have a team together and so forth, and, you know, what led to this was, you know, I was new to Chisholm Trail a few years ago, it was kind of a weird, weird year, and then the following year, I kept hearing the word, you know, we need some consistency, we need some clarity about expected behaviors. And so the time felt right, the staff made it feel right, and so we put together a team, a PBIS building team, and we met four times last spring, all-day training, and I came out of there thinking, I just wish all of our staff could have, it was just amazing training, and we put together some of our, what is important at Chisholm Trail? What are our values? What are the things we really want to reinforce with our kids? What do we need our kids to do? And we got information, we bring it back to our whole staff, get their feedback, and then bring it back to the committee, and we ultimately landed on CST Rocks. And you'll notice there's no K, and that was, that was kind of a hurdle to get over for some, for some at first, but it was really important that we built a program not around an acronym that's spelled correctly, but an acronym that actually means what we want it to mean. And so, respect, ownership, compassion, safety, and CST Rocks has really become part of the Chisholm Trail vernacular. It's been, from my vantage point, really a perfect blend of community involvement. The upper-left picture, those are parents. Every Friday, we have parents that are volunteering to work a store, and we put that out in August, and it filled up all the way through Christmas within a, you know, week or two. And the upper right there, that was the first week of school, and we did a kickoff, and one of the messages we really want to get out to our kids is, respect, ownership, compassion, and safety is not just a Chisholm Trail thing. You walk out the doors, those values are still important wherever you go. And so Luis, who is at Carmen's, he came over, because our students go right across the street after school, and they'll visit him, and, you know, those are important values. He came over. We had some representatives from Minskies, which is really close to us, come over, and our custodian is there, and it was really important to share with our students what this means, not just to us, but to our community members, and pointing out that our community gives back to us, and specifically talking with our 6th graders, they all got door hangers to welcome them before school started, and I pointed out to them, guess who donated some money to make that happen? It was this individual right here. And so to be able to see our students, be able to connect the community effort is really important to me, and I think it's an important thing for Chisholm Trail. How does this program work? You'll see there, the bottom left, there's a token, and so what I told students is, this is kind of the fun part of CST Rocks, you know? If you are, if you do an expected behavior, an expected behavior could be simply walking into class, sitting down to get... simply walking into class, sitting down, getting your materials out, we'll recognize that with a token. And we'll say, hey, I appreciate you being, taking ownership and getting ready for class and, and being ready for the day. So, and, and you're specific with the praise and, and the token's kind of a, a way to have fun with it. They can use it for the store. And it, 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 it's just a fun way for them to, to buy into the program. But like I said, what's important is the values, respect, ownership, compassion, safety. And so we had 10,000 tokens in circulation, we needed more, we have about 20,000. And each token represents an expected behavior. And to be totally candid, you know, initially, you're tempted to want to give for the above and beyond, constantly the above and beyond, but this is for the expected behavior, the volume in the halls, how we clean up our tables at lunch. And we want to try to build this, this in our building. From my vantage point, with the intentionality of our staff in the building, it has really promoted and created such a positive, it's student-to-teacher interactions, because you can turn even what may be a negative interaction into a positive. I'll give you an example. I'll say, I, I've used this before, but at a football game, heard a commotion, I look up and there's a group of students and, oh my gosh, what happened? Well, someone had an applesauce packet. Okay? At a football game, it exploded. Okay, imagine that? And so there's applesauce all over backpack, called a couple of students down, hey, what happened? Okay, go get some things cleaned up. We cleaned it up, all that stuff. It came back, oh, Mr. Sola, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry. Okay, well, let's talk about this. And, and so we had a good conversation. And at the end of it, I say, hey, I appreciate that you came over, you talked to me, we had a good conversation and that you took ownership for this mistake. So gave a token, gave a fist bump and go back. And, and that's just a, one example of, I don't know if I would have done that in the past or, or how I would have done that in the past, but there's a lot of things that are becoming intentional and our kids are, are buying in. They're, I feel like they're so friendly in the hall, you know, welcome and hi, because we're, this is part of that program. And so I'm going to show just a quick video of some of our media members talking about rocks.
They've made a really big impact. When everybody who was quiet and sitting on the bus and they started getting rocks, and everybody was like, hey, so, so, so how do I get some of those tokens? And I'm like, well, look at the behavior around you. Look at this or that, you know, look at these other things. And so they started observing that behavior and they started mirroring it. So it's made my bus ride a lot easier.
It was around the first day, it was okay. And there was a few of these beginners lying there, really, there was, because I have known them before, they were my real friends. And didn't know how to open a locker, didn't know where any of their classes were. So I helped this girl open her locker and she was like really thankful I took her to her class, because she was super scared of being late, didn't know how hard it was either. And instead, I was late to my class and I got a tardy and stuff, and then I got it like, I don't know, redone, because they figured out that I was helping the students.
I see consistency in my expectations. Kids know when they're in my room or another room, that the expectation's by the same, which is then encouraging positive interactions between students and adults and students and students.
Well, I love the idea of students, one. And then, two, you were so open for me to come over. You invited me and I said, hey, I want to be part of the school. As a community, we need to be part of schools. I think we need to be involved. As a business owner, more important, you want to be involved so the students have a safe place to come to.
It feels like the rules are more clearly defined. I feel like it encourages people to be better.
So you want to enforce that awesome behavior and to reward those kids that are always consistent, to reward the kids who may not always be consistent, but have a couple of hiccups. And I'm like, hey, you're doing really good this week, let's get you a rock and then let's enforce that behavior. And they're like, oh, okay, great.
You get a lot of kids who are, are excited about the token aspect and the store. And so they, yes, they're doing unexpected behaviors, but they're doing it a lot more often. And so it's a lot, we spend a lot less time as teachers and educators saying, don't do this, don't do that, rather than, rather than we do to say, hey, I know she did this, thanks for doing that. And it just kind of spreads, so.
Respect, respect for each other. So we have some people who like to touch other people or, you know, they're just kind of goofing around, but then he gets that hand, I'm like, hey, guys, okay? Nope, nope. So those that respect the boundaries of their peers. When they respect me, when I ask, hey, look, we're not gonna bring any food on the bus today. And then somebody walked on with something the other day and said, hey, can't bring that on here. It's like, cool, if I leave it up here, is that awesome? I said, great, leave it up here so you're not tempted. Gave him a rock as soon as he got off. I said, I appreciate you being respectful, doing exactly what I asked you to do.
I just love the idea of, not, not so much, I should say rewarding, but I just love the idea to give them something for being so good. These kids need an incentive, need to know that we care and we love. And a token might not seem a lot to you, but it seems like we're watching them and we're actually paying attention to them. And I love that, that when you're paying attention to a student, the student realizes that you care. So I love that about the tokens.
I'll let you deal with that. So you saw a little bit there and, you know, there's something that's.
When everybody was quiet and sitting on the bus and they started.
There's something that's really powerful, or that can be really powerful about that exchange of a token. It, it's, it's eye contact, it's interaction. And it could be for something very, very small, it could be something for a little bigger. But it is the, truly the community effort. I've, I've talked about parents tonight, our, our, our parent community, our district level support community with the coaches we have, we have a PBIS coach as well, and it's been an integral part of the process, all the way to, you know, our, our OPSF fundraiser community. But when it comes down to all the things that I've shown tonight about Chisholm Trail, it starts right here with what we call the CST family. And it's, it's our teachers, it's our staff that are connecting with students every day. They make the connections with our parents at home. And if it wasn't for the people that are on this page, I don't know that anything that I've talked about tonight is really gonna get off the ground. I, I said I anchored into the PBIS program. It's working, it's working well, there's still things we can work on and improve and adjust to, but it's working because of, of the people up here, the relationships that they have with students. And this is just another way to kind of enhance that. So that is my, that was five to seven minutes, as I was asked to do, of, of my brag on Chisholm Trail. So again, I really appreciate your time as a small token of appreciation. I know, that's bad. Every Friday, I do the dad jokes on the announcement, so.
I took it in, yes, love it.
I would love to invite all of you, at some point, come to Chisholm Trail, come in with that token, talk with our kids, ask them what rocks is, and they should all be able to tell you, and I think they will, I'm pretty confident in that. But I'd love to have you over, they would love to get that from you and see what we're all about. So thank you for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I just wanted to offer Mr. Sola, thank you for speaking tonight. We go way back and my daughter's now 23 and she still talks about Mr. Sola. She has special needs and he just was a special person to her when she was in middle school. I may have told my kids at certain hard points during middle school that there's not a person on the planet that says, gosh, I wish I could go back to middle school, but you're challenging that thought. It sounds like a very good place to be, so. I love your Twitter feed, so if you're not following, how, what is Chisholm Trail MS?
CST Wildcats MS.
Okay. It is such a great blend of service, humor, academic, sports. You do a great, who, if, if it's you, your people, your people do a great job on that. I just, I really enjoy that. And then Dr. Jaeger, would you like about 10 more of that bus driver?
Yes.
20, 100?
Today, we'd like 29.
Okay, 29, exactly. Yes, yes. I love how you involve the community in the token system with Carmen's Cosina and then your bus drivers. What a great way to be community right there around your school, so.
It's been really neat. He, he has given out tokens to some of our kids. The coffee shop across the street, they asked if we had anything that, to recognize kids. As a matter of fact, we do. They're excited, they're gonna get some, you know, again, it's just a fun way to, to celebrate, but it's, it's, it's not the above and beyond, it's the expected. So it's been really, really changing. I can't imagine being in the building, honestly, without it at this point. My staff think I get paid extra to talk about PBIS, because I talk about it sometimes. I really have bought in myself, it's been a great process and it's evolving, but it's been really good, so.
That's amazing, yeah, good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I just thought I'd throw out one thing, is that you didn't know who I was at the time, and I was walking behind you as you're walking in the building. Earlier, we had the community open house around the bond election. And you were standing there, opened the door and talking to the kids. I'm just, just another person walking the door. Like, one of the kids asked you, why are you so excited all the time? One of your kids asked you that. And he said, I love all this, this is the greatest thing ever. And look, we get to open our doors to everyone to come into the school. The way you interacted with those kids, I didn't know you were the principal at the time, but it was just one of those things, like, who's that guy? He was so excited to be with those kids. The kids were like, they blocked around you, I don't know. And I think a couple of them were yours, which was, I think someone said, well, those did belong to him. But I just thought I would, those interactions, when you don't know, it's like you would have been a candidate for one of these at that point. Those interactions, you don't know when someone else catches you, being excited and grateful and happy to be with them, is one of the things, I want to give you that feedback, because that's one of those things that I really enjoy throughout the district, is when you catch people and they don't even realize it, how awesome and wonderful people are. And that's why you're in the right place at the right time. So I just thought I'd give you that feedback, because I saw it, caught it, and I was like, that's good, good for the school.
Thank you.
The kids love it.
What time will that banana bread be ready tomorrow?
I'm doing a dry run tonight. Come over anytime after second hour, it'll be ready.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to 4.02, we have an audit review. Ms. Cassie Osborne, please.
It's fun to follow up that with an audit review, right? No pressure. All right, tonight I'd like to introduce to you Jonathan Nybarger. He's with our independent audit firm, Allen Gibson-Hulak, and he's going to give you an overview of our audit.
Good evening and thank you for having me. I'm Jonathan Nybarger with AGH. I was the officer in charge of the audit this year, and I'll briefly go through our audit reports with you and then answer any questions you may have. First, I was gonna go through the annual comprehensive financial statement, which I think everybody has a copy, either electronic or maybe printed. It's the big financial statement that you have. Our auditor's report is on pages one through three. The auditor's report includes standards that we use for the audit. And most importantly, what everyone's interested in is the opinion that we issued. The opinion can be found in the first section, and we issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest and best opinion the district can receive and speaks very highly on the financial management of the school district. The other part that I was going to cover today is towards the back of the financial statement and is the governmental audit section that begins with the schedule, schedule of expenditures of federal awards on page 126. Really, probably the best page to go to there is 128, though, that provides a summary of the single audit. Because the district expended more than $750,000 in federal awards during the year, you are required to receive a special audit over those expenditures called the single audit. This year, we were required to audit three different grants, which are the special education cluster, the ESER funds, and the epidemiology and laboratory capacity for infectious diseases grant. And I'm happy to report that as part of our audit over these grants, we did not have any findings and issues with any of the grants at the district. Then, separate from the financial statements, we issued our auditor's communication letter to those charged with governance. This letter includes standard required communications that were required to keep the governing body informed about significant matters relating to the audit. I won't go through every piece in this letter, but we'll just kind of hit some of the key points this evening. The first is towards the bottom of the first page and discusses significant changes to the district's financial statements. This year, the district was required to adopt GASB 87, which has to do with lease standards that were implemented. The district evaluated leases and worked with a software company called Debtbook to evaluate their leases and ultimately determined that leases at the school district that they have were not applicable under the standard to be recorded as liabilities and are just expensed this year in the financial statements. Then on the second page, we noted that there were no significant unusual transactions that were uncovered during our audit. And then it also discusses some of the estimates that are included in the financial statements. Not every number in the district's financial statements is a hard and fast number, some of those have to be estimated. And these estimates include the net pension liability, the other post and benefit, benefits liabilities, the claims liability for health insurance and workman's comp, and the allowance for doubtful accounts. And then the last item that I was going to point out was one uncorrected misstatement that the district determined was not material to the financial statements overall, but were still required to report as part of our audit and related to accounts payable in the capital project fund. Ultimately, the goal for our audit is to determine if the books and records accurately reflect the financial statements of the entity. Did the entity comply with laws and regulations and are internal controls in place and operating effectively? And I'm happy to report that after our audit, the answer to all of those questions is yes. I, I'd also like to thank the district staff that we work with, Cassie and her team. An audit is a huge undertaking and we appreciate all their assistance and cooperation in completing the audit. So thank you for your time this evening and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And our last presentation for the evening, certainly last but not least, Mr. Hudson.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd. I just want to take a few moments and give you, give the board a transportation update. As you know, it's no secret, the current state of affairs is really, there's a national bus driver shortage that you see things anywhere from one or two drivers in a small district to the National Guard being called in in Massachusetts to transport kit. So it's a nationwide problem that we're, that we're experiencing. And there's a number of variables that really enter into why that shortage is occurring. Some are, have greater impact than others. For example, the trans, student transportation industry is really reliant on retirees. A lot of our drivers have retired from a previous job. The problem is post-pandemic, they truly retired. They, they don't drive, they left driving or people left their job and are not taking on a second job during their retirement. In addition, there are some small variables, something as simple as, there's a, as you know, there's a limit to how much you can earn when you're on social security. Well, wages are rising even for bus drivers, but that threshold isn't changing. So they're being forced to work less and less and less and less, so it does become very appealing to take on a job during your retirement. I'd like to pause just for a second, though, and kind of do a shout out for Olivia Malone is our transportation director and her and her staff work tirelessly every day, working with parents and rerouting students and reacting day in and day out to, to this shortage. And, and DS Bus Lines is doing everything they can in the way of recruitment and retention of drivers. But unfortunately, our, our district is just simply not immune to what's going on across the country. So we take it closer to home. Right now, we have 151 drivers and we need 187 drivers. You need 170 to really make the system work, but you need about a 10% absence coverage. That's where we're running into troubles. We don't have enough drivers and now we're, and anytime somebody is, is ill, we, the coverage is coming from the office. It's just, it's unsustainable situation that we have. In our AM routes, we're averaging about 11 middle school, high school routes that are arriving right at the bell time or up to 30 minutes late. We're averaging three elementary double ride routes arriving at eight, 10 to eight, 20. That's 10 to 20 minutes late. In the PM, it gets a little, even more complicated. Set about seven routes at the secondary level, arriving 35 minutes after dismissal to pick up kids. About, we're averaging about three combined routes, middle school and high school in the PM, and we average about five elementary routes arriving 20 minutes after dismissal. And I'll explain some of the reasoning behind, reasons for that, but on the aver, we're averaging about 140 to 160 late buses per month. Now, those aren't stats I am excited to report to you. DS isn't, Olivia isn't, it's just the reality. It's just the reality that we're living in currently. There are some unique things about our school district that make a bad problem even worse. Our Twenty-First Century Academies, in order for us to provide equal access to all of our academies, to all of our student body, we transport anybody to their academy. So that means we are running kids from corner to corner in our district, which is not a very efficient way to run a transportation system, but it's a commitment we made to the academies. But it comes at a price. Those long run times, running late, and the inability to utilize drivers for some of the gen ed routes. We have what I call an unadjusted pay rider program. Our large neighbors on either side of us have taken action either over the summer or heading into next semester, reducing the services around pay rider. Right now, we have a cap, but the other districts have started putting mileage radiuses in. One mile, won't do it within one mile, won't do it within one and a half. Currently, we do not have that. We also offer safety variances. Not all districts do that. Around our railroad tracks areas that don't have sidewalks, we've, we've always initiated a safety variance and will pick up, pick up kids around that. And really where the safety variance is where that comes into play is, some districts will limit, like, we need fifty kids before we'll put a bus and a route in place for safety variance. We do not do that. Other districts have jump start, head start. They don't necessarily transport those early childhood kids as we do, so that's another factor. And we lack what's called a three-tier bus system. A three-tier bus system is a term you're going to start to hear a lot more about. What that is, is one bus delivers the one level, I'll say, middle school. Then they go back and pick up high school. Then they go back and pick up elementary. That's three-tier. We do not do that right now. We do kind of a hybrid, two-tier system. Running our first level and our last level are being picked up by the same bus, but there's another group of buses that have to pick up that, that middle group, the high school in our situation right now. So what's all that mean, why I'm reporting that this evening is really, we have concerns as we head into the winter. We're already seeing on a, on a cold day, we have a lot of call-ins. When it's sixty degrees tomorrow, we'll be in pretty good shape and the office will be able to probably handle it. But as it becomes consistently cold with that more senior staff that the industry relies on, we'd know we tend to see more absences, and we don't see that driver pool. So there may be the potential need for some short-term interventions. One type of intervention is what's called a rolling blackout. Rather than notifying parents the day of, which is a very irritating situation that that bus is going to be forty minutes late, you set up this set of routes, won't run every Tuesday. And it's pay rider routes. It's not that we're obligated to transport any student over two and a half miles. One of the pay riders, a lot of districts have found, parents would rather know the consistency. It's not ideal, but they'd at least know that they can make plans that every Tuesday, we have to find an alternative form of transportation. If we start to get, we may start to get into that situation in second semester and have to really look at that hard. And we have to, as the image in the background says, we've got to kind of stop. We've got to take a really hard look at our program, and we're going to have to develop some long-term solutions because this is not a short-term situation. The industry believes it's going to be, it is going to be long-term mainly because of that retirement population that is not entering into that, into that workforce. So what can you do, or really what can our greater public do? First of all, there's a survey that's going to be going out very shortly, asking some information about how our systems are utilized so that, and we're gathering that so that a group, a committee that includes parents can help us determine, do we need to make some adjustments longer term in our, in our system and begin them possibly as early as next year? An example of that might be our bell times. Do we have to adjust those so that we could get into a three-tier system? What would be that ideal situation? But that's just one example. There's twenty different ways you can, you can peel this onion, and that's where we're going to need that input. We also ask that there are some flexibility. I know that's an overused word, but we know it is not going to be ideal second semester, so we're asking for some flexibility and know that if we have to do some of those interventions until we can get to the long-term solution, it's, it's not something we really want to do. It's going to be, it's going to be out of absolute necessity. Right now, we're limping along, but the, the patience is running out. The calls are starting to ramp up about the lateness, and it's not good for instruction. We've got to figure out how we get those kids there on time, pick them up on time, and get them, get them where they need to be. And the last thing is, if you want to be part of the solution, please go to DS Bus Line. If you ever consider driving a bus, we could sure use, use the help. So as I said, I'm not excited about this particular report, but I thought it's important. You know the reality that we will be looking at short-term, but we're jumping on the long-term solution so we can have it in place for next year.
So before we go to questions, I may add a couple of other things, if that's okay. I'd like to also mention our other transportation partner, which is Assisted Transportation. They are really helping us a lot right now in terms, in terms of filling some of the gaps, especially with Twenty-First Century routes. They're really helping with those where they have the capacity for that. You know, so many of the things that we're challenged with are the perfect storm of our world that we're living in. They probably could help us more, except they can't procure more vehicles for transportation. So, you know, we continue to work with them and talk with them and, and those sorts of things, but they also are locked up a little bit for a reason that's a little bit different than bus drivers in some ways. The other thing that I just also want to mention is a little bit of kind of what the next couple of weeks might look like in terms of notification, communication with our community and those sorts of things. So tomorrow, all the families of students who are bus riders will receive an email from the district outlining, outlining what some of the current changes and challenges, not changes, challenges are, and really put those families on alert that it is possible that even before January, we may have to go to some rolling blackouts and some of those kinds of things. We just want to proactively communicate with those families that there may be an impact. Of course, we don't want to do that, but, but, you know, certainly research in our own district shows that, you know, folks are out when it's cold and illness goes around and those kinds of things. So we're not, you know, anticipating that that will certainly happen, but we feel that we owe some information to those families just so they can prepare for that. The other thing that oftentimes, and we had a community advisory group meeting last night that had great feedback about this. You know, when we talk about bus times and start times and end times, it's easy for us to think, well, that's not my kid. My kid doesn't ride the bus. But what's happening is really impacting all kids across our system right now because of the shortage of drivers and the amount of time that's needed to get from one location to another or somebody that doesn't usually drive a route, that has to drive a different route. All those things take a lot of time. So, you know, we're seeing limited access right now across the system for field trips. We're seeing it in terms of activity shuttles for sports and, and those kinds of things where kids are having to leave school much earlier than they typically have so they can be back to school, so the drivers can be back to school to run their routes and, and those, those kinds of things. Even to the point that we have some kids who likely haven't had a chance and may not get the chance to go on a field trip this year because the busing is just not available to get it done. So this is really something, as we think about the educational program for all of our students, that impacts all of our kids. So the first piece will be that information to our families of bus riders next week. Or I'm sorry, tomorrow. But then next week, we will begin sending some information out to our entire community that really describes what the challenges are. Becky and her team have done a great job with a communications plan that will be a fairly detailed communications plan because there's a lot of dynamics to explain with this. But part of it will be a video. We'll have a district website page stood up for information for our families about this, also with some FAQ and information as well. Part of that then will also be us sending a survey. It's a relatively quick survey that our families will be able to take and participate in. But the survey will really be an opportunity for families to give us information about how they get their kids to school, what that looks like. Because one of the things we know is we have a lot of registered bus riders that never get on a bus, that we're holding that bus registration spot. Maybe for that day, there's some snow on the road, and I don't want my kiddo driving their car to school that day and things, which is very legitimate. But we're going to try to get after some of that kind of stuff through a survey. But the million-dollar question in the survey really is, are you supportive of us, of us as a school district, because this is impacting all students, having a conversation about adjusting starting and ending times for schools and that kind of thing? So we're excited to get that feedback from our community. Right now, Olivia, who John referenced, and John and the team at DS, they've worked on about, I don't know, forty-seven different possible options. So there's some that work better than others and some that we're not quite sure yet. We're really at a point where we need that information from our community to know where that support level lies. So that's kind of our next step. And then if that would come back in a way that says, yeah, let's, yes, let's continue this conversation, that's where we would get the committee back together or get a committee together to kind of vet different options, look at the information that our community provides in the term of input, and then hopefully work with that group to make a recommendation no later than February, March, at the very latest, to the Board of Education, if we're able to make some changes to accommodate it that way. I don't know that, you know, what John talked about with the three-tiered bus system is necessarily imminent, but in terms of fixing our current reality, that is a pretty logical option. I think, you know, if we don't move forward with that as a community, there is a potential that we're going to have to look at other things, like, do we continue to offer pay riders as a school system versus transport just the students that were legally obligated to transfer at two and a half miles, that kind of thing? So it will be an ongoing conversation, but, you know, to the credit of our team that's, that's been working on this a little bit, we're really at the point where we need to stop getting input largely from our community before we move on to the next step, so.
Any questions from the board?
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. You always get the fun job of delivering hard news, and you do it so well. I do that sometimes in my professional life, so I'm sensitive to that. Just a couple of things, you know, I, it looks like there, and it's important to look at all of the challenges, so I'm here for that. I just would like to also plead that we look at all of those things that don't impact what Letha has done so well, which is that equal access to academic opportunities. And, and I would really like that to be off the list. I understand the reason why we need to, to pay attention to that and look at it, and, but I would like to quell fears that that is not something that's changing anytime soon. And as far as how nimble we are and, and quick to pivot on any of those suggestions, are you saying nothing other than possibly, if we have to, the rolling blackouts next semester? Most of those suggestions are going to take a deeper dive of problem solving, and we won't be looking at anything next semester?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We need that input from the public.
Right.
And as you said, this is not a, a lot of those solutions are not a quick pivot. There's a lot of moving parts to them. The earliest would be next year that we could implement any of them, other than something like a rolling blackout.
Yeah, excellent.
And, and I think too, if I could just chime in on that real quick, you know, the Twenty-First Century Academy piece is really just unique to us in a way that we're one of the only districts that provides that transportation between a freshman and senior year for students. But, you know, as you said, that's something that our district has long held up as a standard and a priority for us. So, you know, there's, there's nobody on our team that right now says that's what we need to be thinking about because that's, it's one of the things that makes us unique, and it's a different challenge than other districts would have because of that. But it also provides that access for all of our students, which is really important for us, so.
Excellent.
I want to clarify and point, you did say that it's, and you're good at it, which is really important, is people listen to John when he says, "There's problems coming that in the next couple of weeks," because you said, "Next couple of weeks, rolling blackout might be a reality because we just don't have people." And so I want to make sure I say that because people need to not think, "Oh, that's coming next year." This is important now. It could happen in the spring. We don't want it to. But I also want to call out what you said was the most important. This is not a financial issue priority. It is a people issue priority. The funds have been allocated. The budgets are there. We don't have the drivers. If we had the drivers, we probably wouldn't be having this conversation now. True?
True.
But money is also one of those things we have to be careful and always, and you're all the money guy, because you always bring that as conservative, frugal, careful, plan ahead. That's the conversation that is extended. I also want to call out that, and I'm correct, is there's a direct impact to education right now. Kids not showing up at school on time, costing learning, educational opportunities disrupting classes, teachers are missing out, that's bothering teachers and kids. This is an emergency now, and I'm going to say the word. It's affecting education, and that is our priority over everything. The budgets are there. We need drivers and we need kids to school. Am I correct?
You're right.
Am I reading, you hearing what you're saying?
Yes.
One of the things I want to throw out is that, you know, when I was a kid, you know, buses didn't go everywhere, right? We do something unique in the pay bus ride, right? So it's an opportunity, again, you hear me, everyone, to volunteer. This is an opportunity for people in their communities to go and meet their neighbors and meet their friends and find out who's all going to the same places. When I was in high school, I rode my bike to school until I found out the kid down the street had a car. And I went, my, my parents said, "Go knock on the door." I met a neighbor three doors down I didn't know. And I started getting a ride because my mom said, "Go knock on the decam door." We may get to that point where more of these kids need to, and the parents need to start looking at, "How do I create a carpool? How do I say, 'My kid is not going to drive to Alate the West all by themselves' if there's a chance they could find someone else in their academy or something else, right? We need to find, work inside that and say, 'You guys, these kids talk to each other.'" Because I was, we were sat there at the college the other day, "So many cars show up to school with one kid in them." When their neighbors probably two blocks, three blocks down the road, if they just knew, right? So at the high school level, we can tap the kids. At the grade school and elementary, we've got to figure out how to reconnect moms and dads with the schools, what's going on, and where is at risk. And so that's one of the conversations at the school level, at the PTO conversation. Trickle this down into each of those of the site councils because a lot of solutions at the grassroots of each of the schools could be found if it's, that this conversation is matriculated through. I think that Alate the Community can solve this. If we can't get all the drivers, then we have parents, we have Miniman, we have, we have ways to make this happen. But in those schools where they're showing up late, that's where those principals, I would encourage them to use a communication structure and just take this, share it out, remember the, remember the survey and said, "And your kids," right, "please respond." The question I had around the survey is, I heard at first there was a survey to all the bus folks first.
So there's, there's an email to the bus riders.
An email.
Families tomorrow. That's not the survey. That's the, that's the,
That's just communicate.
That's the proactive, "We might be in some challenging situations" email. And then the survey will get sent next Wednesday, next Wednesday with communications to our entire community.
That's the thing I want to make. I thought I heard you saying. I really wanted to say that. You said it. Whether they ride the bus or not, they are impacted. So please, and I know nobody ever responds to those things. They're not a high percentage. This is an opportunity to make an impact with a high percentage response.
Yeah.
Right? It's like, how could you? I would love for that to say, if there was a way that you could be, what's a way you could participate?
Well, we've, we've done a couple of things on the survey, very intentionally. Becky and her group have done a terrific job. So one of the questions on the survey is, first, would you like to serve on the committee if we move forward with this conversation? It's important to note, if five thousand people sign up to be on the committee, we're probably going to pick about thirty because we'll also need staff members and what have you on that, so it can be a representative group. But the other thing too is there's a link to be a bus driver. So there's a place. Are you interested in being a bus driver? The box pops up and you can go right to the DS site and have them pay a bonus and teach you how to get a CDL and be a bus driver as well. So there's a really practical way there in addition to volunteering and those kinds of things that you're mentioning, Mr. Connell.
And we had high school, and we had college kids who were driving the buses when I was in North Carolina. And we were, as fifteen-year-olds, we were flabbergasted that twenty-three-year-olds were driving our buses. But we have a college community at Johnson County Community College, a way to get them paid. We have Mid-America. There's a network out there that not just retirees that we could tap into too. But, but thanks for bringing the subject to us because I know it's something you guys stress about every month and tell us it's coming.
It's second to snowdads.
Thank you for the,
John, thanks to you and Olivia, the entire team. I know you guys have worked all year long to, to stop gaps and, and small changes and short-term plans, but it's, it's clear that we need a long-term, sustainable solution to this problem. So appreciate the work that you and Olivia have done all, all year. And hopefully our community hears this message and really take part in, take part in that survey and read those emails and provide the feedback to us so we can make an informed decision. All right, moving on to public comments. Ms. Steele?
The Board of Education reserves limited time during its regular meetings for individuals to address the board. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room when requested by the board president, acting vice president. When beginning your address to the board, we ask that you please share your name, the city where you live, and what schools your children attend, if, if applicable. Tonight, we request that individual speakers limit their comments to three minutes. A staff person will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the three-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate-
If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. We ask that speakers refrain from discussing complaints involving individual staff members or students if they have not been previously addressed to the district's administration. Out of respect for everyone in attendance, yelling, foul language, props, visuals, and addressing the audience are not permitted. In addition, audience members are not allowed to speak, yell, or give applause during public comments. This ensures the board is able to listen and then transition to the next speaker. Please note that those who disrupt the meeting in any capacity will be asked to leave and may lose the opportunity to attend future meetings.
Thank you. I'm going to apologize in advance if I butcher someone's name. Please correct me if I do though. Our first speaker, Michael Hanzella.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Hanzelka. I'm a senior at Alath the North High School. Today, I am here to talk to you about the district's new guidance concerning student gender identity and pronouns. So I'd like to start off by saying I have had the privilege to speak with Mr. Connell on this beforehand. And talk about what our expectations are. But, all right, so I myself am a member of the Alath the North community. And I have been very lucky to receive support from my family and my community, at home and at school. But I have to understand that I am in a very unique position in that respect. I know many, many students who cannot come out to their parents for fear of abuse or displacement. And school is the only place they can be themselves. However, with the enactment of the new guidance, even that safe space is at risk. If teachers aren't following best practice as is described in the guidance, they would end up outing the student to their parents and potentially putting that student's safety in jeopardy. But if they don't, there is no guarantee the student can use their preferred name and pronouns in the classroom. It is a lose-lose situation. It doesn't matter if you take this on a case-by-case basis, because ultimately the guidance is far too vague to allow any protection for the student. So what do students want? We suggest allowing teachers to provide info sheets at the beginning of the year, much like they do now, but with optional fields for preferred name, pronouns, and where these optional of course, so that students don't feel forced to fill out these forms and reveal anything. This removes the discomfort of having to speak with teachers directly, sharing this information and the degree to which they use it should be entirely up to the students. And I believe this is how we will achieve equality for all students and students at school. Thank you.
Thank you. Logan McAllister.
Good evening, Dr. Hager and board members. My name is Logan McAllister, Alath the East junior senior English teacher. I am speaking on behalf of the club I sponsor at East, Gender Sexuality Alliance, or GSA, and all of the students who are afraid to be their authentic self. I am a second-year teacher who came into this profession to provide students a safe and brave space and was recently recognized as the Horizon Award winner at East for doing just that. Although I have only been teaching a short time, I have realized as the GSA sponsor, junior sponsor, and a volunteer for various sporting events and debate tournaments, is that kids that we teach all share one thing in common. They want to be loved and respected. Love comes in many forms, appreciation for doing a good job, accolades for winning an award, or even something as simple as being called by a preferred name or, and/or pronoun, or using a restroom that aligns with their gender identity. As an openly gay teacher and due to a neighboring school district ban on transgender students for using their preferred restroom or playing on sports teams that align to their gender identity, I felt compelled to speak before you tonight. Our school and district's guidance related to gender identity states to obtain parental consent before addressing the student publicly by their preferred name and/or pronoun is simply unacceptable and unnecessary. With the increased focus on social and emotional development within our district, outing our transgender students and not being able to provide a safe space for them is not what is best for their development. No, it is not a ban on transgender students like other districts have, but it still causes detrimental harm to the well-being of students at school and at home. We as a district cannot ban students from being their authentic self. School is not just a place for growing academically. It is a place for all students to grow socially and emotionally as they explore who they want to become. As a professional who is 100% committed to my career, I cannot and will not knowingly cause harm to any of my students. This may indeed put a big target on my back, but the end goal is for me to love and respect their wishes regardless. All students should be able to rely on the school and the staff within to provide a safe and supportive space. Thank you.
Addison Bartelli.
Good evening, Jaeger. My name is Addison Bartelli. I am a genderless, I'm a genderless senior at Alath the East High School. I'm also the president of Alath the East Gender Sexuality Association. It's something I take quite seriously, and that's why I'm here to speak today. Addison is not my government name, but is the name everyone knows me by and is my genuine, truly real name. Before this year started, I was talking to my counselors and they informed me of two things. One, I would not be able to graduate or be known by as Addison in this school district. And two, I would need my parents' word to express me as me. I later learned this board has taken a stance on encouraging staff to report students to their parents for being In my case, my parents have been nothing but wonderful, and this guidance has not affected me negatively all that much. But I personally know others for whom this guidance is doing great harm. These students come from home, started from proven to be unsafe, and now school is no safe. These students are forced to hide because they know from everyone that there's an expectation that staff report to their parents, potentially creating a hostile domestic environment for these students. I ask why we have these specific students rather their opportunity to be seen, heard, and safe in the place where they spend most of their time. I believe that this has not all been transparent about its guidance and the policies it's imposing on our students. I think this lack of transparency is damaging and students should have the means to understand the stances the board takes that affect them so infinitely. I have had to talk to multiple teachers and counselors over a series of months to reach the understanding of this guidance and where to the level I understand it now. I think this board needs to take measures to protect and frustrate their students. And additionally, I would encourage this board to take strides in permitting transgender students to use the name that they know innately belongs to them and being able to identify themselves with their true, genuine identities in day-to-day life and when under emails, under Google accounts. I think it adds so much to the student sense of security in our schools, and I think that's so important for each and every one of our students. Finally, I would ask the board to glance against the wall, because I think for as long as I've been in this district, there's been such a commitment to preparing students for their own individual, unique futures. But I think it is difficult to make such a claim when we so adamantly deny our trans students' presence. Thank you.
Thank you. Heidi Tomasi.
Good evening. My name is Heidi Tomasi and I work as a para for the Mill Creek Campus here in Alatha. My husband and all three of my children graduated from Alatha South. And my in-laws both taught in the district for nearly 40 years. My father-in-law actually is Coach Tomasi, graduated, or retired from Chisholm Trail. I'm here tonight to speak about fentanyl and our dire need for education about this lethal drug in our community. Fentanyl came into my life on January 12th, 2022 by way of a devastating overdose. Watching EMTs administer dose after dose of Narcan to save our son's life is something my family and I will never forget. Even though we didn't plan his funeral that night, we've planned it a thousand times since. After three impatient treatment programs, he is now a resident in a sober living community. But not an hour goes by that I do not live in mortal fear of his next relapse. It took just one pill for Griffin to become an opiate addict. According to the CDC, more than 150 people die every day due to taking fentanyl. Fentanyl is 100 times stronger than morphine and heroin. And overdoses often occur because people purchasing what they think are prescription drugs have no, they have no way of knowing if they are laced with fentanyl or not. Our son did not know the pill he took was laced with fentanyl. In fact, six out of 10 fentanyl-laced fake prescription pills now contain a potentially lethal dose of fentanyl. These are the pills that our young people are buying on the street, mainly via social media. Data is now being collected on a devastating new trend where fentanyl is being detected in marijuana products, resulting in an even more staggering overdose numbers. I'll give fentanyl credit for one thing, it does not discriminate on the basis of race, color, ethnicity, national origin, sex, disability, age, religion, sexual orientation, or gender identity. I am here tonight to call our district to action. We have a responsibility to our students, parents, and staff to educate and inform them about this deadly epidemic that is already present in our schools and in our community. Alatha schools have administered Narcan 11 times in the last three years to students as young as sixth grade. Although I am beyond grateful for the district's preparedness in making sure that Narcan is widely available in our schools, we now need a comprehensive awareness campaign in hopes that we can prevent future overdose and/or eventual death. Though this situation calls for swift action, an awareness campaign could be offered in our district at minimal cost. Much of this information is already available and just needs to be thoughtfully collected and presented in a way that is relevant and resourceful to Alatha families and staff. Not only are lives at stake, but from my family's experience, I can tell you that this epidemic is outrageously expensive. Without my USD 233 benefits package, our son would not have had the treatment opportunities he so badly needed. All right, thank you.
Hello, my name is Nicole Robles, and I've been an educator at both the elementary and middle school levels during my 14 years here in Alatha. Most recently, I've had the opportunity to serve teachers as an MTSS literacy specialist, along with 10 of the best humans I've ever met. Our team wanted to take a quick moment to highlight to the public the amazing work our educators are doing every single day for our students. Now, it takes a lot to be a skilled reader. First, you have to know about sentences, words, letters. After that come the sounds and the correspondence between the two. Finally, after that, you're able to crack the code by blending sounds together to form words, and that's when the real magic happens. You've unlocked new worlds. But even after that, you still have to build fluency through lots and lots and lots of practice. Without marrying decoding with fluency, we have no chance of comprehending what we read. When you stop to consider it, it's really a complex, complicated process. Now, believe it or not, many of us were not taught this in our undergraduate programs or even our graduate-level ones. But now, our teachers, our whole system really, are intimately aware of the progression of reading. And now, for the first time, we have the tools, diagnostics, to pinpoint student needs, whether that be phonemic awareness, phonics, or fluency. Our teachers are like mechanics when the check engine light comes on. They're rolling up their sleeves and finding just where the difficulty lies. And after students, or after teachers meet those needs, their students are off to the races. All professional learning communities at the elementary buildings and intervention teams at the middle and high schools are engaging our students in intervention cycles targeting phonemic awareness, phonics, or fluency. Every three weeks, you can find our teachers huddled around kidney bean tables, conference rooms, or student desks, analyzing data and restructuring intervention groups. They celebrate when a student meets their potential and form game plans for the next cycle when they don't. We're finding students across the district making great gains in both phonics and fluency, and teachers are making data-informed decisions in real time. Not only are we closing reading gaps, we're ensuring that we prevent them. This is a huge shift for our whole system with a lot of intricate parts. Teachers have implemented a new core literacy program, redesigned the way they approach spelling, learned a new universal screening platform, made adjustments to how we implement the MTSS process, and incorporated writing resources. It's been a lot, and yet we see patience, perseverance, and pragmatism at every turn. I wish I had more time to tell you all the great things our teachers are doing in literacy. I tell you about third graders competing in morphing Jenga, about a fourth grader's grin when he reads his first multi-syllabic word, middle school students excited to create challenging word letters, or word ladders for their classmates, and about alt-ed teachers who finally feel like they have tangible materials and methods to help students grow. But I'm just going to invite you instead to step inside some classrooms, come alongside us, take the chance to listen to our great Alatha readers. Thank you.
It's Meneka Garpati. Before I begin, can I pass? Okay. So my name is Meneka Garpati, and I'm a senior at Alath the North. And I'm speaking on the guidance relating to gender identity and preferred pronouns. So while I haven't had the firsthand experience and, or firsthand implications of this guidance, my friends have. And we had the privilege to speak with Mr. Connell a few weeks ago to discuss our thoughts and listen to your guys' perspective. So thank you, Mr. Connell, again, for listening to our experiences and the experiences of trans students supporting us. I'm here because I want to ensure you leave here with the feelings of my peers who spoke before me in written form, which is why I passed out our article. So I'm the co-editor of the Alath the North Chronicle newspaper. My co-editor and I wrote an article called "In the Name of Privacy." It's the cover of that issue. It covered the district's guidance regarding gender identity. And so because it was a cover issue, it received a lot of, nothing but positive feedback from the North community, students, and teachers. And going into the school year, many students expressed concern with the guidance and how this could impact trans students in the district. We decided it was important to share the thoughts of these students and uplift their voices in the school. The article sums up the ideas expressed earlier by Michael, Mr. McAllister, and Addie, but expands on the scope of this issue with thoughts from other students and teachers. It highlights the hypocrisy of the case-by-case basis action of this guidance and solutions proposed by Alath the students, the very people that this guidance negatively affects. The article can be found online at onhsnews.com, and we encourage you all to read it. The Chronicle staff urges you to read about the feelings of Alath the North students and fully understand the implications of your guidance. And I hope you take the time to listen to and understand the perspectives expressed in the article. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Bricks.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Megan Bricks, and this is my fifth year of teaching here in the Alath the Public Schools. Quick shout-out, the fact that a parent of two twins that I teach at my own very school just stood up here and spoke with such eloquence, just like brought so much happiness to me. Like, I come here and I want to share the truth. I want to share the good things that are happening. And to have someone who I directly teach children, who I just taught them today, it was great. As we are almost halfway through our current school year, I wanted to take a moment to give a shout-out to the amazing things that are happening each and every day within our classrooms. As an elementary music teacher, I'm sometimes asked to fill in when we do not have a substitute for a classroom. And this experience, especially lately, has opened my eyes to the truly amazing things that these classroom teachers are asked to do. Throughout the school day, there are grade levels that have small groups for both math and reading. Sometimes those teachers will even teach two small groups for reading within the same school day to provide the support and resources to their students who need them. There are teachers intertwining social studies or science curriculum with another subject to provide their students with extra experience with the topic. Teachers within a building truly work as a team when others are gone. When we needed assistance in the lunchroom with breakfast and lunch, we had various people from throughout the building stepping up and asking how they could help because of the family relationship our staff has created. I hope that you all understand that the job of an educator is more than simply just coming in each day and teaching their lesson plans. It's so amazing to see colleagues helping each other in the hallway as they are passing by with their class to provide support to a staff member in need. From the moment these staff members walk in the doors to the moments they leave, they are dedicated to supporting both the students and staff within the building, no matter the age of the student and no matter the job title of the adult. We are all here to support each other, and that is the best part of this job. I know that coming to work each day is made so much easier, knowing that I have such amazing and supportive specialists who work alongside me that will have my back no matter what, even with extra coffee. I truly hope that this holiday season, our community takes the time to sit down and reach out to someone within their child's school and say thank you. A simple thank you can go a long way. A thank you can make a tough day a little easier. A thank you can bring a smile to our face. A thank you can be a reassurance that we are truly making a difference in just at least one person's life. The field of education is extremely important, and we must ensure that we remind our staff that they are appreciated and that their work each day matters. I would not be a teacher, be the teacher I am today without the people who have gotten me here, especially Dr. Julie Slider, who I got the experience to student teach under. Without her and her support and her push to make me step out of my comfort zone, I wouldn't be here standing in front of you each and every month speaking the truth. Thank you for everything, and make sure to thank someone in your life. Thank you.
Thank you. Cara Berry.
Good evening. I am Cara Berry, and this is Liam Berry, and we live in Overland Park, and he attends Walnut Grove 3rd grade. And I just want to say thank you. I'm blessed that we get to be here today. It's unfortunate it came from a meeting that I was hoping was more positive and uplifting, so I'll share it here instead. And so fortunately, my son got to learn public speaking and advocating today, which I will take that every day of the week. So I'm here not on behalf of myself, not on behalf of my son, but to address the strategic plan that we have in place on making sure that we provide behavior and social-emotional development for all. And my concern is the inclusive playgrounds that we were so excited to be getting at Walnut Grove, and then hopefully at each school respectively, once it's, once they're established. And it's not inclusive. It is not. Liam could very quickly pick out that the ramp going up leads to a stair. So he could only push his friend up the ramp and stop. Yes, there's been some adjustments, and so, yes, I get that there's maybe some differences, but an all-inclusive playground, number one, it's not political, it's not controversial. Every single child could benefit from it. I do not have a special needs child. I have been very strong in the community. I taught at school for the deaf, and so I just have a passion for it. The universal design, we could even temporarily help a child. If they're, break their leg and they end up in a wheelchair temporarily, it's a resolution from them. No parent is going to be disappointed because their child is not missing out if we make these appropriate for all kids and their development. IDEA, least restrictive environment, I'm very familiar with all of these terms. We should have our home, our neighborhood, I can take my child out to the playground that he goes to every day on a daily basis, and he can play and he can have fun. Other kids don't have that privilege, and this is our taxpayer money. I also believe the most important, and my why, is that I learned sign language because I got to learn ASL because I knew it was important when I was in 3rd grade. He's in 3rd grade. We can develop children like this into grown adults who understand inclusion. It's just natural. It's just there every day because that is who they are. It, we're not setting up barriers as adults to separate the kids. And so the benefit for them and our society long-term outweighs every, everything that you could bring to me as an argument against them. So my ask is more transparency, more awareness. What resources we've utilized, there's lots of people willing to help. What are the costs of this equipment versus that? And then what does it look like for not just Walnut Grove, but everyone going, every school going forward? I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to action consent. Are there any questions about 6.01 through 6.06? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve consent agenda items 6.01 through 6.06 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Beveridge, a second by Mrs. Steele.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
The motion carries 4-0. I know we have some questions on our next section. Any questions prior to 7.06? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve 7.01 through 7.05 as presented.
I do have a quick question.
Sure.
It's like, I understand the vape sensors that are going in the bath, the restrooms, is that correct? Maybe it's just a comment. I was in a middle school, and the kids weren't vaping in the bathroom. They were vaping in the hallway, walking down the hallway. So there may be a need to expand the census sensors, because the kids are pretty doggone smart. They were outsmarting the worry that something was already in the bathrooms, right? And so I was with kids, and they were like, oh, they're vaping, and you could see it. And so this is a good start. I want us to be able to expand in not just the catching of them, but in the communications. I know that a couple of years ago, there was a real big, the school board really tried to tackle it from an education perspective, but my commentary would be to let's expand beyond just the sensors to what are we doing in the schools and communications as well. But, thank you for that second.
Sure.
I move, I think that what you're looking for is a motion I move to for 7.1, 2, 3, 4, 5 to be approved as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Connell, a second by Mr. Beveridge.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
7.06. Still?
I was hoping that we could hear just a little bit from Luanne Hermrich about this language arts subscription. Thank you.
I'm also going to invite Mr. Mike Flynnthrift to make a few comments about the ELL portion of this purchase. Learning A to Z is quite simply a digital library of texts. Thousands of texts that our teachers choose from for a variety of purpose, purposes. One purpose may simply be to get a decodable text that may support a systematic phonics instruction lesson that was delivered in the classroom through our 95% systematic approach to teaching kids to decode successfully. So one may be just to help support the standards we have in our curriculum related to phonics. Another purpose may be to support science and social studies texts. Any topic, a teacher could go to the digital site and pull texts related to some topic that is taught in any of the standards in our science and social studies curriculum. Another purpose might be to be supportive, as was mentioned earlier, of fluency. Fluency is absolutely critical for our students, and how do they get that? Through practice. They can develop the automaticity that's needed for fluency by reading texts over and over again, taking books home to read to mom and dad at night. So books could be used from this site to take home for that purpose. Additionally, it could be for just an area of interest. Second-grade group studying whales. The teacher could go on and pull off the site any books related to whales and give those to the kids. They could take those home at night, practice fluency, but still feed their interest in a topic. And so those are just a few of the reasons that the digital library might be used in the classroom by our teachers, and this particular resource has been used very successful for many, many years, and we're just renewing it for one year. Mike's going to talk a bit about the ELL portion.
So the program also has some components that we use with our English language learners. Some of those supplemental components are specifically designed for them and their, their needs. We use the program alongside our core materials with our English language learners to build some background in both concepts and vocabulary across the curriculum. They have some resources, some activities, and texts for students across the curriculum in science, math, social studies, and even some of our specials such as music and art. And I'll say it's definitely essential for some of our students that before coming to Olatha and being our Olatha learners may not have had the fortunate opportunity to have consistent schooling. I'm thinking of one of our Olatha friends that before starting 5th grade in Olatha had not attended school at all. And so alongside some of our core materials that say for 5th grade, we needed that supplement for him in those different areas of science and social studies, and the program provides texts and activities for him that we can use with our core materials. It also will read the information to the students, providing them access to vocabulary and the concepts that they may not be able to get due to the fact that they're also learning English as well as the, as the concepts. So we've used the program for a number of years as well. The students have access to all the different components that Luanne was speaking of, but as you'll see in the board report, that we also purchased an additional component specifically for our learners as well to help them.
Mike, is there any implications with our immersion program?
Yes, absolutely. In there as well in the program is there's a toggle for our language. So our immersion teachers as elementary teachers have access to the program, and they have access to all the materials as well in Spanish. And so in our dual-language immersion program, students have access to different types of texts. We actually have in our public library, our school libraries, we have materials in Spanish for them. But then also, the teacher is able to use this program to get readers for them in Spanish at their level. And so they're able to print them home, print them up at school, take them home, and the students are able to read in Spanish to their parents because they're able to pull different content areas for science and social studies that they're learning in the immersion program. So it is an essential part of our literacy component as well in our immersion programs that we use. Yes.
Excellent.
A couple of quick things I might add to it. The first one is, is that, you know, in, in the, in the attempt to try to provide resources for all kids with a dynamic group of kids that's ever-changing within our district, if we went to a textbook company and said, we need to cover all of this with hard materials in our schools, meaning hard books, soft books, books that we purchase just to be in our schools, I mean, we'd be looking for millions of dollars for the availability to have, you know, books in multiple languages and all those pieces. So this has really served us well for 16 years in our district. And you've heard me say this before, when it comes to things provided by curriculum companies, publishers, those kinds of things, that there is no one program that somebody's going to sell us off a shelf and we have to use it exactly as it's prescribed. And so, you know, one of the things I'm so proud of our team doing all the time is really evaluating those resources and how they support the curriculum that our Board of Education has approved, what we know is best practice, and that's really what the result of what, what Mike and Luanne are talking about tonight, that it really is the intentionality of how we use this resource. And that's one of the things that I think we always have to be careful about, and I've said this before, that when we, you know, search a resource online and, you know, look at what's available and those kinds of things, much of the time, it's a menu, and because it's something that's offered doesn't mean it's part of it that we utilize as a school system. And that's always important to remember as well. So I appreciate the opportunity for them to speak about the unique ways that we're using this. I mean, to be frank about it, if, if we didn't continue to have this resource available, I can tell you just by my walks in our elementary schools this week, literally, we were going to be taking thousands of books out of the hands of our kids that are meant to do what, what should be, you know, happening that Luanne and Mike are describing. So I just wanted to add those two pieces.
And tell me if I'm understanding how it's used correctly, that in a time when we're trying to help our teachers with ease of access for supplementals and teaching our kids in unique ways to reach them, this task that they would still need to do sounds quite cumbersome without the resource. Am I thinking of that correctly? That, that the access to this A to Z learning is helping our teachers grab materials for our kids quicker, easier?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
In a multi, in a multitude of ways.
Mm-hmm, correct. And I love that we're trusting our teachers to use the resource in the way they see fit with their kids because they're the ones on the front lines and, and understand what their students need.
True.
So I have a couple of questions for you. So I heard you correctly that your proposed, your recommendation to us is a one-year renewal?
Correct.
Okay. With that said, what was presented to us on the agenda, the pricing model in the board visibility area does not correspond with anything that I can find in the actual proposal? And so I'm missing something?
Okay.
Or confused? I see the proposal, list proposal that was attached said year one, year two, year three, has option one, option two, or both options paired. I could not find a way to add those together to the pricing structure that's showing on our agenda. So I need to call that out now. That doesn't mean it isn't there. I'm asking for some help maybe in the next few minutes before we make a vote on it.
I think, I think we are, we are in year three now. 2022, 2023 is the third year of that. Is that John? Is that correct?
And then it, and then it, it expires out. We have to renew this year, for this year.
So we're making a decision today about 23, 24?
Yes.
Okay, but just for the one-year renewal, correct?
Correct.
And that's fine, as long as I can figure out where that pricing.
I took a look at that when I was reviewing those agenda items. I'll try to do it from memory. The one-year option in option one, scroll down to the last table, there's an add-on?
Yeah, the both option.
It's the one-year option. Add those together, it's the agenda total.
There you go.
Thank you, John.
Somebody need to translate what I was looking for, because I was trying to other questions around the solution itself, right? So, and I'm just going to say it because it's in there dug on dock. I'm hoping if they come back to us again, they don't call out that it's alignment with Common Core. It's been many years, and that has such a bad connotation in our educations. I can't imagine that they're really still standing on that, but I'm gonna just call it out so that if you're getting guidance to them in future subscriptions, they really need to be talking about how they're aligned with our structured literacy models and really find language in their proposal that fits what we're doing, not what they want to sell, okay? It's just guidance. Now, if I understand correctly, is this an ebook model, like an electronic library? Is that correct?
It's an electronic library that it also has printable resources.
And so the printable, so they could print, a teacher could say, this particular chapter fits real well with what we're talking about in social studies. And they could pull a chapter out and say, hey, this for you, you know, your kids, without having to print a whole book or pull off a whole book. Is that correct?
That's a good question, because most of the time, the books, Mr. Connell, are very, very short in nature. It's designed for a, a, a very focused read and not a long, it's like Dr. Jaeger said, we have lots of other resources that would be used for, you know, the longer type reads that we would do in a classroom. This is more or less a shorter version that gets to some facts about the topic that is in printable form, so it's not pages and pages and pages of text we would be printing.
That was the key piece, because I was about to ask a question, is how does this differ from the fact we have physical school libraries in every building? Those would be longer, more extended books. These are micro, micro books subjects.
Absolutely.
So the ability for a teacher to say, my subject is, my goal is, So the ability for a teacher to say, my subject is, my goal is, my age appropriateness is, and be able to do that.
And as Dr. Jaeger mentioned in our class, in our building visits, one of the things we noticed when we were in the schools, we saw plastic bags full of the printables on topic. And those were labeled by topic. And so the teacher had organized the printables so that they could be used multiple times by multiple students. But they were all printed and organized and ready to use again and again.
So it's a description to building a library, a micro library for a class or a teacher for their subjects that meet the students' needs in their classroom.
Correct.
And so what might have fit some of the kids last year may not fit this next year as they learn, they're students, they're adapting to the needs of the individualized students, which goes to our core need to be adaptive, to approach education for the uniqueness of each of the students where they are. Is that correct?
Yes and no, because if I'm, if I'm printing off resources because it's part of my social studies and science curriculum, my social studies and science curriculum would be the same each year. So those books would be usable with all of the kids in the grade level because we're all studying the same topics and standards in social studies and science. So yes and no.
Last question. That it's an e-library, are they typically or regularly or almost all the time physically printed to the students or any, or any of them accessing electronically?
I would suggest that they are most of the time printed for a variety of reasons. Number one, a teacher cannot always be with a student and we only have access to eight hundred license with what we're paying. And so it's, it's basically a limited number of license that we're asking for.
Awesome.
In the process.
Do any of the books in the library, a lot of ignorance, so have an auditory component? Where there are, if any of the books, do they have an auditory, especially in the English language learners?
Yes.
Is the articulation and the pronunciation of the words as they might be, is there any secondary resource that we use currently with this or tangentially within the department?
So yes, with, with the, with the product and the different supplemental components is they do have the ability to play the books, the students can't hear it, which is one of the reasons why for our English language learners, we definitely use this resource because it's difficult to find books that correlate with the different topics that are shorter and high interested to students that will also provide that auditory support, which is why another reason why I put the product.
Thank you for answering my questions.
No problem.
Those are the things I had, I could got the information.
And, and we do have some, especially in our immersion programs where our teachers will use Seesaw and other programs to push the books to the students. And so then they can go ahead and go through them as well. But it does depend on our licensing.
Thank you. I was really worried that they were all ebooks and my daughter is one of those that her teachers have always given her a printed version because she has a kinesthetic visual, not an auditory version and doesn't really do all the computer reading. So that's a huge, huge win value. So thank you.
Thank you. I have a question about seven dot zero eight. Any questions on seven dot zero seven? If not, I have Travis come up and talk about seven zero, zero eight and we'll take those last three together. Is that okay?
That's great.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Palangi.
Good evening.
There are times where I would just say, I think this is a great opportunity for us to highlight you and your team being good stewards of tax dollars. So can you walk us through or just briefly touch on the savings that we have in seven dot zero eight?
I can. Uh, thank you. And bid package number two that's being presented tonight for Santa Fe Trail Middle School is probably about ninety-nine percent of the overall project that we'll be presenting. And we had a very good bid results and turnout for that. We seemed to hit the market right at a very good time. So what is being presented tonight in front of you is trade, about forty trade bids that will equal around forty-six point two million dollars. And if you take that and then add it to what was approved last month with our site packages, we're at about forty-nine point two million for this scope of work. And what we originally had estimated for our bond was fifty million, fifty million two hundred thousand. So we're, we're right under where we needed to be. The construction manager's estimate ended up being roughly about, let me see here, about fifty-three million for what is being presented tonight and in total fifty-six point four million. And that was taken into account just the, the market that we were currently in and the volatility that was out there. So there's a lot of projects in the metro that have been completed and we seem to, to come right in at a good time with a good sized project that will keep a lot of these contractors busy throughout the duration of this project through twenty twenty-four. So we got a lot of great turnout in the, the groups that we're recommending to, to enter a contract with for this project are great contractors that we have worked with before. And the New Creek Novak Construction Partner Team is ready to go. As you know, we're out there pushing dirt right now and getting ready to get started. And we'd like to, to continue that momentum that we're currently having right now.
Awesome. Thank you.
I, a quick story if, if I don't mind. Travis is probably not going to do justice on, on bragging on himself with this, but you know, as I look at it, I think, you know, over the construction manager estimate to where we are recommended and approved, we're at about seven million dollar savings there, which is significant. And, you know, I happened to be somewhere a, a few weeks ago, right after this process happened, and this man who I now know came up to me and turns out he's an architect in the area, does some schoolwork, hadn't met him before. And he goes, are you Dr. Jaeger? And I said, yeah. He goes, what about those bid packages for Santa Fe Trail? I said, I don't even know what you're talking about because nobody has, had shared it with me at that time. But just, just suffice it to say that it created quite a buzz and the architecture and construction folks that touched the school industry in our area because of where the bid packages came back for our project on Santa Fe. And certainly that's a lot of work by Travis and his team and our, our partners in this project as well. But you know, when you look at that, you know, there will be things as we go through a bond where we're over and some things are, we're under. And two things that I'd really like to call out is how close Travis's initial estimate was before the bond was even approved and we were working through that. And then the savings from what the construction managers thought we would be at for this project. So I think both of those things are just, we're stopping and saying job well done.
Thank you.
A little feedback for you is that at the KESB convention, had an opportunity on two different days, two out of the three days, spend some time with the New Creek Novak folks. And, and I would tell you that, and as a feedback to you, to them, I found them really honorable and respectful people, took very pointed, hard tough questions for me, you know, one on one. But I, their response is what was important for, and I say this as a, not an enthusiastic enforcement, you know, person for all this construction stuff, being someone that I recognized their earnestness in that they were going to be as aggressive and consistently tight on bids and money. They understood that this was important, but it was also that I was completely watching their bids. And, and I wanted to, this is a good sign. It, it's a good partnership, right?
Yes.
And, and I didn't know any of these companies. You guys knew them when you brought them in, you, you contracted with them. But I, I really liked the fact that they said, absolutely, we're watching every one of our vendors, we're watching every one of our constructors, we're going to ask them and we're going to require them to bid rebid if things change because they know the marketplace is changing. And, and so while they're not here, I would, I'm giving you feedback that that was impressive, that they allowed me to be strong, aggressive, certain, you know, because I'm advocating for every constituent and all of our funds and all of our pay, that I found that to be really very powerful and, and I appreciated it. And then, so whether Brad knew who was going to call this out, that gives me an opportunity to kind of say, yes, this is good. Millions of dollars difference. And that's what we want. We want people that are working with us alongside us to be good stewards, right? To use your word, Brad, right? So I'll be a good steward of time. He's looking at his watch. But I just want to make sure I said that because a lot of times that feedback doesn't come from those who is, who are hardest on these kinds of projects, right? And that's, I'm not afraid to do that.
A very good team, team member in this project and they've worked tirelessly behind the scenes to get out there and pound the table to let everybody know that this project was coming and, and they sparked their interest in, in providing bids.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Travis. All right. I entertain a motion for seven dot zero six through seven dot zero eight.
I move that we approve seven point oh six, oh seven and oh eight as presented.
Second.
Hurry up, a motion by Mr. Connell and a second by Mrs. Steele.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. All right. Onto action other. Any questions on eight dot zero one or eight dot zero two?
Move to approve eight point zero one and eight point zero two as presented.
I second it.
Have a motion by Mr. Beveridge and a second by Mr. Connell.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. All right, we have future action items. Any questions? Please get those to Dr. Jaeger and the team. Information written. Is dear for your perusal? Any topics for discussion?
I have, I did want to make a comment on the parent teacher conference totals for the fall. If you look at the numbers, Ben looks at them, the tremendous at the elementary school, still frustrating for me when I look at the numbers at the middle school and high school. But I was speaking to a couple of teachers. I would like to suggest a modification that would technically increase the numbers. The recommendation was that a lot of parents are having conversations with the teachers or with staff during and through the, but don't go to that. And their numbers may not be getting included because of that night, they're like, I'm going to gift my, the parents were saying, I'm going to, I've already talked to you, teacher ABC on these two other times. We already have a relationship. That time I'm going to gift to the next parent who wants to. So one of the things, a recommendation I would have, I had from teachers would, could we find a way to help them and the administrators of their buildings have some other kind of mechanism to say, I've been having a conversation with the Connells or Beverages and that should be encountered because we've been, you know, technically they've been having the parent teacher conferences throughout the process rather than showing up on an individual night and counting just the gate. Is there some structure that we could investigate? Because I truly believe that the numbers are probably higher than the actual count. And I want to give the teachers and those parents an opportunity to be more properly represented.
Yeah, we, we can definitely look at how we collect the data related to that without a doubt. You know, one of the things, especially at the secondary level with Synergy, which is not new, in parent view and student view is the interaction between teachers and parents is, is pretty quick. It's pretty up to date, you know, when a parent notices something they want to celebrate or a concern that they have and, and what have you. And those are some of the things we've talked about internally. So we can certainly look at our, our collection just a little bit. I'm looking at Dr. Reeves just for a little verification that I'm not talking out of turn here for second semester and, and see what that looks like.
And maybe even add some, I get all those emails, right, from people saying here at a synergy, add a piece of text that comes out of communication that says, by the way, your children's information is available to you at twenty-four seven on Synergy, please log in and.
Yeah, sure.
And then you could track the login structures because I would love to be able to see that from the technology side of the parent view. It's a piece of data that tells us of engagement that we may not see just because they don't lock the door, right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely have a conversation about that.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have a really quick shout out to our finance department on the audit. It's, it's such a thorough process that they go through and I just want to say, you know, thank you to them for all they do managing, you know, millions of dollars and, and if they're, you know, are ever those community concerns about what the budget is telling us, that I can, I can assure that AGH would have found any sort of oddities in there and they did not. So thank you to our finance department who's top notch and always doing great work.
Today's December first, and I don't know if you all know this or not, but our middle school bands and our high school bands got together for Heavy Metal Christmas at College Church of the Nazarene and it was awesome. It was this morning, my, my daughter plays a euphonium, so she got to be a part of that. The, the low brass concert was different, but still sounded amazing. So thanks to our community partner, College Church of the Nazarene and our entire band department, there was sixth graders, seventh grader, eighth graders and every grade level in high school there representing, playing the, the low brass instrument. So that was awesome. Heavy Metal Christmas.
Heavy Metal Christmas, got it.
Did you get a T-shirt?
I did not. Next year.
Along that line, I'd like to kind of shout out, I, I, I don't know if I've been consistent enough, but if the teachers out there are not hearing us is that we do like to be invited to things. And one of the staff in the middle school choral administration group was kind enough to send, at least I got it, I think everybody got it, an invitation to the middle school honor choir event at Oletha North. My wife's like, why are you going? You don't have any kids in middle school. But I like to see it. I like to be it. And I was, it was packed at Oletha North, stood in the back. Wow, really, really cool. So Oletha North Show Choir in Oletha West were there, did a couple of songs each. But the fact that when, two things, tremendous talent in all those middle school kids and those high school kids. Second, tremendous talent. You could see the love and care in those instructors. So Megan, I know you're in the elementary sky, but I could have seen, I envisioned you being up there. They were all in it. They were all in with these kids from the far side. But also I would gift one of these out to all those high school kids. When the middle school finished, the high school choirs stood up and applauded before the rest of the community did. And that says something big for those kids to recognize where they are, right? And so that was a big, big win for the community and the choral folks. So you elementary choral folks getting a break from middle school, great job. The other thing I wanted to call out is that it was really, really exciting this past Monday. A father's club at North joined the club of clubs that all the other high schools have one at the father's club. And we actually had helped, we had dads from all the different clubs, even from Blue, Blue Valley come and help us out that day. About forty dads showed up to hand out the largest volume of food distribution at any of the high schools and any of the clubs ever in five and a half years, over two thousand items, a thousand donuts from Hy-Vee, thank you, Hy-Vee. Five hundred Chick-fil-A sandwiches from Chick-fil-A. Never knew my minivan could hold so much, so many donuts, there was no visibility when I picked them up. And then we had Taco Zelbia Home, who has a place down on Santa Fe, brought their mobile truck over. And I will tell you, it was like, that was a huge difference maker for the Latino community, for those kids to watch them walk up with surprise and say, no, free tacos. We were paying for them. And to watch everybody walk in happily. A bunch of the dads afterwards said they were able to walk through the building. Everybody looked up. So from the bottom of my heart, having a kid at that school, to those teachers, the feedback. But my thing is, what was it, nine hundred some odd students at that school come from other school zones? It is a unique high school with so many kids coming from there, but we're still in the district where I think of it as one high school with five campuses. And so for all of the father's groups, for all of the volunteer groups that are doing things over the next few weeks, going into the holidays, teachers are going to need all your volunteer site councils, teachers are going to need support, feeding during exams, kids are going to need something during exams. You know, let's pick up the volunteerism if we can and make sure that every school gets touched with some holiday spirit. So that's not two, two bits. Thank you. Dr. Jaeger?
I have just a couple of things tonight. I'm going to start with the one I'm most excited about tonight. And there'll be much more coming forward about this probably in January. But we were just notified a couple of weeks ago that Westview Elementary has been identified as a national title one distinguished school. And that really is an incredible honor. So in the United States, there's forty, almost forty-seven thousand title one schools across the nation. And this puts them in a group of fifty for this school year as one of the top fifty title one schools in the United States for closing the achievement gap, which is just incredible when you think about that. So, so proud of them, so proud of the work that they've done. A cool fact, and we're trying to figure out if any other district has done this, this is actually the third school in our district to win this identification, if you will, from the national title one organization. from the National Title I organization. So, we're gonna be celebrating the heck out of Westview and the amazing work that they did. This was based on state assessment results and growth under state assessments. We're just so proud of them and we're really excited about that. So, there will be a national press release related to this. We'll, of course, do press releases and all those kinds of things. But our staff over there and the community over there has just done a remarkable job. So, when great things come together, great things happen for kids and really a great example of that. I'd also like just to call out the SFT groundbreaking. You know, I went home that night from work and I told my wife, I said, "Today has been my favorite day as a superintendent." And, you know, as I sat there at the groundbreaking and thought about the history of Santa Fe, but the vision of our community and our board as we walked through that bond process, to really invest in some of our most at-risk community and students. To see a brand-new school come to fruition there is just really incredible. But I was a little struck that day because some people that I didn't expect to be there showed up. Our former superintendent, Dr. Ron Wimmer, was there, which was really cool. That was the building where he was a principal. He hasn't actually worked in our district since I've worked in this district. But it was important for him to be there to see that significant thing happen, as well as Dr. Stacy Yurkovich, who was the principal there, and Phil Clark, who's a retired principal from our district. But it really symbolized the strong history of Santa Fe Trail, but also the future and that we're moving forward and doing great things for those kids in that community, which I'm just so proud of. It was truly a special moment for me, which is really irrelevant, special moment for our community. So, that was cool. You all know this, but our senior team, every Thursday morning, has a standing appointment, if you will, where we go out in schools, interact with our students and our staff. And, you know, I have to tell you, it is truly the highlight of my week. Each week we do that. I'm out in schools almost every day somewhere, but that intentional time on Thursday mornings is so fun. And part of it is because we're partnered up with other people and we get to hang out together and say, "Hey, did you see that? How awesome is that?" And those kinds of things. And it has just been, lack of a better word, so reassuring to see our kids doing so well, to see our staff doing so well. And man, are they working their tails off, both our staff and our kids each and every day, you know, when we see those things happening. But, you know, I use that to say that, you know, we're really making a concerted effort this year to get our communities into our schools, to see what's happening on a daily basis. And I promise you, you'll be impressed by what you see if you take the opportunity to do that and just want to extend that invitation again. So, so many great things happening. So, I'll wind that up by saying, fair, or fair view, Westview, as where I was a principal, occasionally it comes out still. I'll wind up by saying, Westview Elementary, again, one of the top 50 schools out of 47,000 in the United States, which is just incredible. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, and we will need executive session tonight, 15 minutes?
If that sounds right with you.
I think we'd get that at 15.
Okay.
Alright, I'm entertaining a motion for 13.01.
Move that the board go into executive session for the purpose of discussing non-elected personnel exemption under coma, a statutory approved subject and justification, and that the board return to the regular meeting at 8:10 PM in this room.
I second the motion.
I'm sorry.
We have a motion by...
Thank you.
We're both ready to go, but I was like...
We have a motion by Mr. Beveridge and a second by Mr. Connell.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.